Okay, at this time I'd like to call the Hinkley Township Special Meeting for the purpose to meet with website design companies to order at 12:00 PM. Our first guest is Mark from Proximity Marketing. Jack, this is your gentleman.
This is the gentleman on my phone.
And do you want to introduce him any further than what I've said before he starts?
I think I'm gonna let him rock and roll.
Okay, Mark, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Let's do a little sound check here. Hopefully you'll be able to hear me, there's no echo with Zoom, I've turned my sound off here. So, good morning or good afternoon, I guess, at this point, everybody. I am Mark Preby and I am the President of Proximity Marketing. We're a digital marketing company based right down the road here in Brunswick. We have been there for about 15 years. We're a 27-year-old digital marketing company. And I have prepared a short presentation on an overview of how we see developing the Hinkley Township website. What you'll see is that we have a deep history in website development, including working with municipalities and other governmental agencies. And we are local. We are versed in WordPress, that is the platform of our preference, which is what your RFQ requests. And with that, I'll just jump in and share this presentation. Thank you. So, we're excited to work with Hinkley on a redevelopment of the website. Hinkley is near and dear to my heart. I grew up in this area, I didn't grow up in Hinkley, but I got here as fast as I could. So, very familiar with the township, have had relatives live here, have done business here. Excited to be considered for this site development. Proximity, as I said, is well-versed to manage this project. This presentation, I put together five factors in why you should consider proximity marketing for the Hinkley website development. One, we are a local agency. We are based here in Medina County. We are very involved in the community. So, as an organization, as individuals, we're involved in Medina County economic development, we are involved in leadership Medina County, we are involved in the Northern Medina County Chamber Alliance, which includes Hinkley. And we are heavily involved in an initiative called Made Medina County, which is an advocacy group for manufacturers primarily. We're a team of 10, I know this picture shows seven, we have others that are, work outside and work remote. And with the exception of one wayward soul, everybody here is a Medina County resident, so we're very, again, very involved, invested in the community. Two, we are an experienced group of people. What you'll see is that we have been around for over 25 years. We have a deep history in digital marketing, we are not people that work in print or other mass media, we're specifically focused on web marketing. So, much of that includes website design, website development. Over the years, we have worked on or managed over 200 different websites. And again, primarily on the platform of WordPress, which would be great for this project. We have a deep history in civic and municipal sites. So, we understand some of the complexities that arise when dealing with different departments in interdepartment, police, fire, anything administrative. So, I'll just show a few samples. Outside the municipal space, we work with groups that range from professional services, so what I'm showing here on screen are a number of before and afters. And again, typically taking a site that has been built in the past, has been outdated for whatever reason, for content, design, development standpoint, a structure standpoint, and refreshing that to put the best brand forward. Professional services, nonprofits and agency work, we've done our fair share here within the county and nationwide. Business-to-business, we work with many companies here in the county. We've put a strong emphasis on working locally so that we can be available and have face-to-face conversations like this one, as we collaborate on projects. So, that's been really a goal of ours, so this is a business-to-business development. And I'll just share that a lot of these sites, what we typically find is, not unlike Hinkley's, they generally have pretty good content, but perhaps do not put the best foot forward in terms of current information, maybe aesthetic look, making it easy for people to possibly update the site. And when I say people, not in agency cars, but usually our clients, developing a process where that could be pretty simple. So, much of what goes into our planning has to do with making sure that the finished product not only looks good, but also meets the audience's needs, it's also something that can be maintained pretty easily, can be updated just as easily. All right, getting into a few governmental sites. Again, technically not governmental, but Medina County Veteran Services, we redid their site a few years ago. This was a site that did not have much of a mobile-friendly look, did not render very well, mobile-friendly, not mobile-friendly, you'd see on your phone or your iPad, would be very small. We redid their site in a manner where it could stack, would render the appropriate size, and again, easy to update. A few years ago, we did the Village of Lodi's website, I think this is probably the most comparable example, although I would say their site was a little less content-heavy, because it has quite a bit of content. But again, this was a site that hadn't been updated in probably three or four years, maybe five or six years in earnest, was on a platform that was not easy to access, didn't have a great visual look from a, that's actually from a desktop standpoint, but mobile as well. We redid this site in a WordPress format, collaborated on some new design elements, helped them organize content and republish the site as a, again, as one that's in WordPress could be easy to be updated by the village itself. Questions so far? I want to just run through things, though. The county, we redid the county's website, this is probably going on about three years ago, but I'll just point out the left, this is what the county's website looked like previously. It was on a server that was physically being hosted at the county somewhere and was, I won't get into the real deep technical, but it was hardcoded HTML, so meaning only a developer or programmer could go in there and update that. Lots and lots of different departments that had needs to access and update information, so we redid the site, we put a lot of thought into the usage of the navigation of the site, how does somebody use the site? One of the things I love about this site is, we not only reorganized the content really based on departments, so going to which department, but also realizing, a lot of people don't necessarily know what department, which department to go to. So, we organized a separate section called "How Do I?" The "How Do I?" section is, how do I get a dog license? How do I get free dental service from the county, whatever that happens to be? And could go in and use that as an option as well, and I'll talk a little bit about the analytics. But aesthetically, we managed some photography, asset collection, we spent a lot of time working with the client, the county, working through what their vision was from a content development, what areas were most important. They did not have any analytics on the site, so it was difficult to know what were the most important elements in terms of total usage by the site. So, that's one of the things we like to know, is how are people using the site? What's the areas where they're falling off and not really having much engagement? Where are they really concentrating most of their time when you look at usage by time on site, etc.? So, this is a project that I'm particularly proud of because it was a pretty massive endeavor in terms of organizing with lots and lots of different groups within the county. There are some groups that are here that lead to different separate sites, certain elected officials chose to have their own developed sites, etc., they can manage. So, a lot of integration here, a lot of things, integration with court dockets and GIS platforms and things that we're pretty versed in connecting to. So, that was a great project and that site's been running well since we launched it. Thirdly, we're very process-driven. We have a system that we use when we do website development engagements that really ensures that it's collaborative, and what that really translates into is a regular set of checkpoints and ongoing meetings throughout that process. So, it's not as if we develop something, we're new to the end and say, okay, here's what we, we start with meetings, we have regular check-ins to ensure we're on the right path, that we're holding our client accountable, because there is generally homework on your end in terms of asset collection and some decision-making. We have a process that ensures that we stay on the timeline that we lay out. Typically, a project like this is a 60 to 90-day project. Much of that really does depend on the collaboration and what assets need to come from you. So, if we have a good partner that can respond in a timely fashion and can make some decisions, then we're at the shorter end of that. But that's generally about the standard timeline. And we have a process that I think helps to keep website projects on budget. So, the way we really formulate is, we look at a current site, we build an estimate out, that estimate is based on time. And so, as we work through that process, we stage out how much time we believe we'll need for each stage of that site development, and we generally fall within that range unless something changes, there's a change order, something occurs midway through that project. But we've had a pretty good track record of staying either at budget or under budget. I'll just, I won't go into this in great detail, but I will share that we have a six-stage process. That process really involves starting from square one and making recommendations on where we think the site should be hosted, the platform, etc. Some of those things, I think, have already been built in. But again, understanding what the security issues are, who will need to have access to it. And then we move into a process of research and planning and mapping it out. And then finally, we go into a design stage where we'll bring back renderings and ideas on the site from an aesthetic standpoint, and then really the developmental part of it, which is coding out the site, loading the pages, maybe a little bit of optimization so it's easier for people to find when they do Google searches. And then we go through a testing and quality assurance process, we have you do the same, and then we take the site live. And once the site is live, we go through a pretty extensive process to make sure that there are no broken links, that it's rendering properly, that it's accessible, that old sites have been cleared and cached out, etc. So, that's worked out very well. What it means for you is that when the site launches, everything you hope that will happen will happen. It'll look great, it'll be easy to find, it will be easy to access, there'll be lots of information that will go away, maybe was outdated, etc. We're data-driven. I do love our design, but I will say, as an agency, we tend to be very focused on results. In many, much of the work that we do, we do a lot of digital marketing once sites are launched, so search engine optimization, social media, email, all these other elements. So, we are predicated on using Google Analytics as a real metric of activity in a scorecard. Building a great website is, it's nice, but if it's not really used in the way you intend it to be used, to a degree, we have failed as an organization, as a partner. So, we use analytics, we install that on every site that we work on, but we are proactive. Many people load Google Analytics on a website and then they never look at it. And for those who don't know what Google Analytics is, it's essentially what I'll call a scorecard, a giant tape recorder, if you will, in the backend, that produces statistical data that may say, hey, for example, how many people were on the site? How long did they stay on the site? Where did they come from? What pages did they consume? Many factors, I mean, there's thousands, actually.
We have that now in this life.
Yes, okay, so if you're familiar with it, then you know it's a wonderful tool, it's just a matter of what are the priorities. So, one of the things that we do is, we proactively set some goals. So, maybe as an organization, you may say, one of our main goals is, yes, we want to track how many visitors are coming, but perhaps you want to see how many people download X, so how many building permits are downloaded, how many, I don't know, applications for whatever it happens to be would be downloaded. And we build that into the metric reporting and try to set a process where that automatically gets emailed to the key people. And again, I say that because a lot of times analytics is installed and it's not really looked at or used as an asset. So, that's important to us. And one of the other things, since Melissa, you said you have analytics on the site now, has it been on there for quite a while?
It has been on there ever since I started in 2017.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
And I just looked at it with our website developer who works currently as a volunteer, he just does it because he loves Hinkley.
Nice.
He pulled it up and sent it to me, I mean, it's easy for him to access, I think we probably can all access it, but it is a very important component to how well the website is functioning.
To me, I love it because it really is a snapshot of what's going on, so you can look and see where people, where are they coming in from? You know, again, what pages are most popular, I think that's important, and that changes, you know, it might be based on time of year as well, too. But for us, we like to look at the analytics of the site at the beginning and say, where are there points of failure? So, where are people dropping off? That's a very important element for us, because maybe it means there's a broken link or there's not enough content there, or something that needs to be changed. So, we'll spend time as developers looking at that to see what can we fix. So, here's a quick snapshot of analytics. And again, this is an example where we may define some of the events that we want to occur, so that if we set that on the first of every month to email to everybody, it's great to look at it and say, here's how many users we had, here's how many times they logged on, here's page views. Those are healthy numbers to look at. I think they're all, they're great to look at relative to maybe previous year, previous month. Every organization is different, so these numbers might be great, they may not be great depending where you're trying to accomplish. And then the events may be the things that we define as a group. Yes, sir.
As far as analyzing that data, you mentioned, you know, it's going to be falling off, so there's something, lack of content or whatever it may be, is that something that you guys as a company are going to review and analyze and make a suggestion, or is that for them to kind of see and request?
You go ahead. We are going to do that at the beginning, so because analytics exists now, we should be able to go back quite a while and see where there are failings. So, we would do that before we do the development.
What is that after we're live? Is that something that's a regular?
That's, I haven't built that into the quote, but that certainly we do have, and we'll talk about that, some ad hoc services where if you need us to come in and look at that, we could do that. But I also think, part of the training that we have in place, we should be able to give you a little bit of education of what to look for, and some of that will come out of the metrics we define. So, if you're getting a Google report monthly and you can see that your events, page views are going up, or downloads of X are also going up, those are good trends. But if we need to come in and look at that, we certainly can. Questions? Yes?
Are you familiar with the Ohio Sunshine Laws? As far as what can be posted on the website and how it works? Okay.
So, much of the content is really driven by our clients. So, we do, we are aware of things like ADA compliant, so that's, the site will certainly be ADA compliant. We'll review what content is currently on the site now. You have some content that goes back pretty far, both from a photo gallery standpoint and I think note standpoint. So, that'll be a discussion point of how much of that is really needed. Some of that we'll be able to see in the analytics, you know, have any of these pages been viewed in the last year or two? And if they haven't, do you really need things from 2010 on there? Okay.
You know, to that question, then, we would be providing the content, correct? Yes.
Right. I just. Lastly, support. We are down the street here, we do love engagement like this face-to-face, so obviously during the process of developing the site, we could do Zoom calls, we could do face-to-face, whatever that process is. But once the site is launched and our engagement winds down, we will do WordPress training with whoever you designate to be involved, and sometimes it's usually a representative from each of the departments, depending on who's going to be updating content. Well, I suggest we do that via Zoom, because then we could record that and you have that for other people that may come in later, that's worked out pretty well. And then there's two additional things from a support standpoint. One is, we have web care maintenance plans, and those plans are really a couple of different options for us to be proactively involved in doing things like technically updating some of the backend elements, like the structure of the site and the theme, some of the plugins, security analysis, site backups. We can do that. Some clients are happy taking that in-house and managing it themselves, and that's perfectly fine, that's an optional element. And then we have ad hoc design and technical editing. So, sometimes people may call us and say, "We forgot how to do this, you trained us, but can you refresh us?" And yes, we'll do that, but it may also be, "We have five or 10 new pages of content, can we just pay you to add that content?" And we'll just track that and build that. It's interesting, you have 15-minute increments in your quote, that's how we build in 15-minute increments. And we have an hourly agency rate, and we just track that rate and track that time and bill it back to you as needed. So.
And what is that rate for the 15-minute increments?
Our agency rate's $125 an hour. And that's the same rate we use when we calculate the estimate of the site itself, which I'll show you here in a second. And just lastly, a couple of things, when the site's done, this should have the elements requested in the proposal, it will be mobile-friendly, it'll be ADA-compliant, Google Calendar-enabled, which is what you're using now, it'll be easy to edit on the backend with text and images. There are things that we're going to advise from a structural standpoint that you may want to have somebody that's a professional do that, it doesn't have to be us, that is the beauty of WordPress, is that there are thousands of people who know how to manage WordPress. So, if you're comfortable doing that, great, but there are things that we'll say, maybe you need to outsource. YouTube channel, do you have a YouTube channel set up now? Okay, so we'll set up a YouTube channel and we'll enable that on the site so that any meeting you have, you can record and upload that content there. And user engagement measurement goes back to us talking about the analytics, we'll make sure that that's installed and you're actually measuring, is there better engagement with the site? I'm kind of curious now, do you think the engagement is great? Is it?
Based on the analytics?
It's a terrible site. For a user, for a user.
It's just very antiquated and very wordy, and so it's difficult to navigate because there is just too much content, is my feeling.
I've never seen the analytics on it, I didn't even know that we have them, but just based off of feedback from residents, it's very old.
If you try and pull it up on your phone, if you're an old guy, forget it.
Not an old guy, so you're fine.
I don't think it's really young guy-friendly, actually.
I mean, I will say, it has most of the information you want there, it's just hard to find. So, putting in.
It has good bones.
Yeah, it has good bones.
That's kind of how I referred to it when I was talking to people, it has good bones, but we need, it's time for some cosmetic surgery.
Yeah, right.
You're talking to me.
Yes.
Of course, the website.
Project timeline, as I said, 60 to 90 days, that's pretty standard, that's from the moment we have all the assets so we can start working. And again, will, unless there's like, boy, we need to have this site up at 60 days, we prefer to take our time and make sure it's right, test it, look at it, and do all that, that works out well. Zoom training, generally we try to do that within a week of the site launch. We like to have a site live for a week, and we will use the seven-day period after the site is launched to make any fixes or corrections. So, if it's something that was missed, something that was just overtly broken, then we correct that.
And you said that's for a week? Or a lot of the revisions for a week?
Exactly, for the seven days following the site launch. So, Zoom training, we'll record that, as I said. And support, we talked about some of the support options, but again, the value of being local is, we have a vested interest in the community, we have vested interest in this area. But again, support is, it's not like you're calling somebody on the other side of the world and hoping there's a chat ticket you can open, you just reach out to us.
And since you are so close, if there is an issue, what's your timeline look like in terms of availability? Same day, within a day or two?
Yeah, I mean, typically it's same day, now I will tell you that we're regular office people, nine to eight to five, I should say, but if there's a, we'll set up monitoring on here whether we're involved in this process or not, so we'll know if the site does go down. And we'll have a contact number that most likely will be somebody in our team's office number that rolls to their cellphone. It's typically same day, I mean, we're not, this is not an e-commerce site, so it doesn't have to be 24-hour support, but that doesn't mean we don't work after hours if something goes wrong. So.
Okay. And then, we did have a question come up last week from Suzanne, I had to step out, and that was, do you have any type of a user guide that you provide? Or you don't, that's why you advise we do the training via Zoom?
Yes, we do have a user guide, it's about three or four pages, so it's not substantial, but it's enough for the average person to be able to use, to know what to do and what not to do. But again, I'd either default to the training or just call us. There's a lot of times, we just make easy fixes that don't ever see an invoice, because it's just a two-minute thing. But yeah, that guide generally is, unless it's a substantial change, is not something you need to worry about.
User guide.
Oh, yes. Very good.
So, there's my contact information, I did bring a few packets, but I will quickly, if we can, go over the, if I can find it, I had it here, sorry, folks. The proposal?
Your computer screen looks like mine, there's just a few things open.
Just a few, just a few things open, right? Okay, here we go. Is that visible here on the screen? Okay. I'll zoom in for us older guys. So, it's fairly straightforward, it recaps a little bit of what we talked about, but we identified five goals, and those range from better brand credibility for Hinkley, it does, people coming into the city, people thinking about relocating the city, working in the city, they go to your site and they really do judge the city or the township based on the view. Making it easier for township residents to find information, making it mobile-friendly, understanding the analytics and how it's being used, allowing for easy access. So, those are the primary goals. Again, our process, I won't go through this, I will leave this with you, but the process is six stages, collecting all the assets, figuring out where it's going to be hosted, setting up the theme, doing the research, this is probably the most collaborative stage here, where we're walking through, what are your likes, what are your dislikes, show us sites that you like and tell us why, tell us sites you don't like, so we could stay away from that design and that functionality as well. And figuring out, are there any integrations, which we know that there are? In the design and development stage, what we'll do is, we'll develop looks and feels, really just a general overall design, and then we'll break that down and code it into different sections, and then revisit what content looks like as you go down underneath those sections. So, if we have police or fire, do we need to make that content look distinctly different from the rest? Is there a reason, is there branding that we need to carry over that has to reflect those particular departments, etc.? And we talked about the go-live process. Forms are big for us, form completions, when somebody goes and fills out something to, hey, I'd like to figure out how do I apply for a garage sale permit, I don't know if that's a thing here or not, but we love to have people fill forms out and then get directed to the appropriate department. So, that is something that, based on the particular form, we'll set up and work with you on if that's something that you need. Email signup is very big for us. I know you have an email signup here, just thinking out of the box are things we like to do, we like to have like modal. thinking out of the box are things we like to do. We like to have like modal pop-ups, which is basically a pop-up on your screen. If somebody hasn't visited the site in 30 days, we may suggest we have a pop-up that says, hey, sign up for our monthly newsletter or weekly newsletter, stand top of what's going on in the township. So things like that. We'll tie that right back to, I don't know if you're using Constant Contact or Mailchimp for your newsletter?
Mailchimp.
Mailchimp, yeah. So we just integrate it right in with Mailchimp. And email's a really great way to continue to connect with your residents. I think it's a, it's a goldmine. And then post-live, we talked about making sure the analytics are included, making sure everything is, forms are being sent to the right people and that the old site is now hidden. Cost development, again, this is a rough estimate, $5,500 to $7,000. That will really be dependent on, you know, do we all have our, our stuff together, right? Are we working through a process where we've got the right assets? And if weeks go by and, you know, the township decides, yep, we're going to send somebody out and take new photography and then we keep having meetings that get canceled. I'm just thinking about things that drive up the cost. Or we go back to the drawing board after work has been approved. But generally we tend to stay towards, towards the bottom end of that or the middle, if, if we're, if we're doing things the way we talk about. These are our standard billing terms. I recognize with the township, it might be a different process. So, but generally it's a third, a third, a third of working on it. There are some things that are not involved. We don't, hosting, where do you currently host your website? Is it just an outsourced platform somewhere?
Outsourced on...
Yeah, we're pretty agnostic, agnostic as to where it sits. We, we make some recommendations based on security and uptime. There's a couple places, but to us, it doesn't really matter wherever you're comfortable. But hosting environment and maybe if we pick a particular WordPress theme, that would be just an additional cost, but that's generally pretty minimal in that space. Post-launch edits, as I mentioned, our agency rate's $125 an hour. So we'll just track that and bill that in 15-minute increments. Unless it's something substantial and you would like a quote, then we can, we can quote that. But generally anything that's three to four hours, just rough estimate, we just do it and bill. And that is it.
Thank you.
And then do you do any kind of social media management? I know you said you would set us up with a YouTube channel. Is there anything else that you do?
Yeah, we, we do a lot of social media. We don't really get into organic social media management. I, I tend to believe philosophically that that should be done internally by, by the, the organization because there's a lot of questions, comments, et cetera, that people banter back and forth with. And we're just not in the position to manage those responses. So there are cases where we're doing a regular schedule of creating some posts and putting it out there, but that's not really a core of what we do. We, we tend to fall more on the, the social media side where it comes to paid engagement. So, hey, we're doing a, a paid push out there because it's buzzer day and you're trying to help the chamber out and raise awareness about it. So we might do a paid campaign on your, on your Instagram or Facebook to help bring people in, something like that. That's typically what we do. We could certainly help you set up social media channels. So it's pretty common for us that whatever brand we develop for the website, we would carry over and do the headers on whichever social media platforms you have.
Are those additional costs?
Uh, if we can put that into the, the quote in terms of time and hours, it's not very substantial in terms of the workload for that. We would just include it. Sure.
On the last page that you put up there, you said it includes one-year news archive content migration. Do we need two years? It all depends on what it is. Okay. Because there are some things that we keep more than one year of.
Okay. We, we could work through that project. When we went through that, there were things that were on there. I went back 10 years. So we.
That will all be updated to be whatever it needs to be current?
I think what we could do is make some decisions about how much you want us to port over versus maybe that's something that internally you, you as an organization could say, hey, it's really important proximity that you put two years on. Then we'll look at the amount of content there and say, it's fine. We'll just leave it in the, the quote. Or we'll come back and say, is it possible, you know, year or two could be put on by, by you or, or what? But we could look at that.
We have a virtual question from our, from Jen Amburn.
Sure.
Jen, we've got you on.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, so what my, I don't want to say concern. That's not quite the right word. But as you could tell with any government agency, that we have different cooks in the kitchen. And so my question is, are you going to come to us with a design, a couple of different design ideas? Or are you looking for us to kind of say, I like this website. This is what we're thinking about?
That's a great question. What we'll ask for is sites that people like for inspiration. Hey, we like this site because we love the giant visuals running across the homepage and we happen to have a photographer that took 10 great shots of Hinckley. We want to profile. We'll take that into consideration and we'll develop concepts and bring those concepts back based on the conversations we have so that we can bring back ideas that match what you're looking for. Yeah, good question.
Thank you, Jen. Jen, do you have any other questions?
No, I think that's all I had. And I'm sorry, I'm not in person today.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mark? Suzanne?
This is going to be repetitive because I had to step out.
That's okay.
What did you say the cost was to develop it? And then is there an annual cost to maintain a service?
Sure. So the quote that we have is $5,500 to $7,000. And again, that's based on the time and development to, yeah, to overhaul and redevelop the site.
And then what's the annual?
So you have your hosting costs, which we're not really involved in. You're just paying a hosting provider. But that hosting cost generally is, I don't know, $200, maybe $300. And what you're paying a hosting provider for is the physical space on their server, uptime, electricity, security and those things. So again, that, that's probably what you would pay whether we're involved or not. For us, we have an ad hoc rate of just call us and say, hey, can you load this document up and can you take these other pages off? We would just track that in 15-minute increments and bill our agency rate of 125 an hour. We also do have some maintenance plans and these maintenance plans are in this. I'll just pull this out and go over it real quick. The maintenance plans are essentially options where we can back up the site. So you may say back it up every day, back it up once a week, whatever that happens to be, run security scans, monitor the site to make sure it doesn't need the theme. Sometimes it's kind of like a car, right? After 36,000 miles, you need some maintenance. So you may need to update a plugin or some function. So there's various plans here that we can manage and they raise from, range from 100 hours a month to 275 hours a month.
Very good.
And if we were to give you the green light, how quickly could we get started?
Once, well, our process is upon acceptance, we set up a kickoff call. That generally happens within a week. And in that week's time, we start the process of asking you for certain asset collection. So it's going to be access, access to different accounts, your hosting account, your site account, some of your social media, whatever it is, and then looking at what assets we need from you. So if there's any integrations, do we need to set that up? Do you have, do you need to give us access to that? But so within a week, we'll have that kickoff call and we're basically off and running. And again, that timeline is generally 60 to 90 days. So you stepped out when I, I mentioned that we have maintenance plans that are optional. So for us, they range from $100 to $275 a month. For $275, we're doing a couple hours worth of regular update and work. That typically is with the client that doesn't want to touch it. And we'll just say, hey, we know we're going to have a lot of assets. So we'll just plan on building in a few hours and every month do those updates. You'd probably be happy, you'd probably be fine with a small maintenance plan or no maintenance plan if you're comfortable doing those updates on your own.
Good. Do you have that paperwork that you're going to leave with?
Yes, I do. Yep. I sure do.
And the maintenance plan portion of it, that would be covered in the training that we could decide whether or not afterward.
Yeah, you can decide after. I, I think that's a good idea. Once you're comfortable and you have a sense of how easy it may be or how difficult it may be, or frankly, a lot of times we have people that just don't have the time. So you can make that decision. You can make that decision three months after we've built the site and just say, hey, we thought we'd be able to do this, but we can't. So.
Okay. Very good. Does anyone else have any questions for Mark? Thank you for being here, Mark. Appreciate your time and your talent.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I am going to. Yeah, thank you so much. And we did not do a roll call. I skipped over that. This is Trustee Astral, Mark. This is Trustee Sweating, you know, Trustee Sweating and Melissa Augustine.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
I'll try. Do my best.
I'm going to go ahead and just mute us for a quick pause if everyone's okay with that while we transition with the next under.
Okay.
Okay. So Kevin, you've gotten your introductions from everyone. You're here from Ideal Graphics. Thank you for being here today.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm just going to give you the floor.
And I should not join with audio here since we're already on audio, correct?
It'll bounce back at you.
All I'm doing here is sharing. Okay. Awesome. Hello, everyone. Again, my name's Kevin Denis with Ideal Graphics. Well, just a little bit about us before I kind of jump into our proposal. We are a graphics and web design company out of Wadsworth. I live in the community, in the Highland community. We have both designers and developers on the team, all within this general area. And even though we do a lot of digital marketing work, if you will, we really do specialize in websites, both on the, the design and the development side of things. So I'm excited to talk to you about our proposal and kind of go through that. Any initial questions or can I jump right into the proposal?
Jump right in.
All right. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So this is in PDF format. I will email it to everyone afterwards. Just wanted to kind of go through some highlights of what we are proposing. And get rid of this. I'm going to jump down to the meat and potatoes of our, of our proposal. So obviously, the Hinckley Township website is ready for an upgrade and that's really what we're proposing we do. A lot of what you see here is similar to the scope because that's frankly, the scope that you all had is exactly what we're looking to do. The site is older and it's also, there's a lot of information on the site. And so really what we're hoping to do when it comes to the outline here is not only, of course, maintain the professional nature of it, but streamline the site. I think the site right now, because there's a lot of information on there, is not very thorough or is very thorough. And we need to find a way to be able to condense the information where people know where to go and so forth. So we're looking to streamline the site. Of course, any site in this day and age has to be mobile friendly. So I almost don't even put those on proposals anymore because it's almost like if it's not mobile friendly, it's a.
It's ours.
It's right, right. So that kind of shows you the data of it, that any website in this day and age has to be mobile friendly. It's kind of like if it's not mobile friendly, you know, that's a problem. And then ADA compliant also is very important as well in this day and age. So those are, as the scope indicated, are the main goals and those are our main goals in this. From a target audience, obviously, it's pretty clear what we're dealing with. We're dealing with Hinckley Township residents. And we, we have some, obviously some high-level information here, but our team really looks forward to, and the discovery talks a little bit about this, diving a little bit deeper. And so with our process, what we will often do is we have this high-level discussion now. We have enough information to be able to come up with a quote, which of course we're looking at today. And then we can take that and once we do move forward, dive deeper with the client, with the township and actually figure out, you know, exactly what your, what you, what you want your website to do. Because it's a tool that should work and it's a tool that, you know, sometimes people throw a bunch of information on there or sometimes people throw a bunch of graphics and videos, but we really want to make it work for you. But we really want to make it work for you. So on a high level, we understand that people are coming for zoning, for the meeting minutes, for the schedule and for the contact information and for the hours of operation. And this is pretty important because as we come to this agreement and as we have this documented, we take that information and utilize that, working with our designers to come up with a website that will be something you'll be happy with for many years to come. Um, so on the discovery level, uh, you know, as you proposed in your scope of work, uh, a multi-phase discovery process is, is perfect. So first of all, when we start this process, if we were to move forward, we start a process internally that takes into account all the information we have. We develop a series of questions that uh, that are, we think are valuable and valid for the website in question. And then we have a, a session with all of you as a secondary step to determine, you know, some of the things that we, you know, mentioned there. Um, as, as to the top reasons, we want to dive deeper into that. We really want, like for instance, when you come to the homepage of a website, you really want it clear as to what, what information should people be seeing? Um, what's the most important thing? What's the secondary thing? And make sure all the information is structured. You don't want people lost. You don't want people, you know, looking deep on the site to find things that are really uh, important. So that's why a, a thorough brainstorming discussion with you all is very valuable from our perspective. Because what we're trying to do is we're trying to uh, lay all the groundwork in advance. So by the time we're building the website, there are really no surprises. I kind of use the analogy, website building is very much like building a house. And so this is the part of the discussion where we're talking about, okay, how many rooms do you want? And you know, is a, um, a, a first floor master important to you or not? You know, those types of questions that you would have with a builder. We're having those discussions with you on the front end, on the discovery phase, which helps us essentially come up with a design, a blueprint for your, your future home, in this case, a website. And then I think it's important to kind of, as noted in the scope as well, that um, the fire and rescue and the police um, pages that are currently pages on the site, on some level deserve their own attention as a sub-site. Um, in the sense that a lot of times websites are just representing one business and um, you'll have sub-pages, but you won't necessarily have sub-sites, if you will. In this guy, in this case, it, our proposal will be, it'll still be one whole website. It's not like it'll be a separate website. But the uh, fire and rescue and the police as separate departments that effectively are entities that the public are coming to and looking for answers and looking for information. We should treat those pages as mini homepages, if you will. So that is, and that deserves a little extra attention too. It's not just another page with some content. It's how we would view it as another mini homepage. Because um, people will arrive on that, on your website, on that page as a first page. So we kind of have to view that as a front door, just as much as the homepage is a front door. Does that make sense? And, and that, that's not uncommon. That happens in some cases with other websites, but I think it's particularly important here that we view essentially this website having several front doors, several homepages, if you will. So uh, I'll jump forward here. Way forward, pardon me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. Um, so the functional requirements, again, was already outlined. So again, it's, it has to be mobile responsive. That, that goes without saying, but it's stated. You all want a predominant search function, uh, so that will be there uh, in the design and essentially will be throughout the website. You'll want people to have the ability to search. You all use Google Calendar functionality, so we will be making certain that that's incorporated correctly throughout the site. There's no, we've done a variety of different solutions there. In some cases, using Google Calendar and other cases incorporating other calendars or even other plugins, but Google Calendar works very well. Um, and especially since it's part of your business process already, I think it makes a lot of sense to continue with that. From a editing perspective, so we build a lot of websites on WordPress, which is the proposal here. We also build on other platforms. We've pretty much any platform, whether it's Squarespace, Wix, custom platforms, we can handle, but WordPress is one of our primary platforms, just because first of all, it's one of the most popular uh, platforms out there. And um, it's, if you build it right, it works pretty well and works for a long period of time. Now I say if you build it right, because sometimes with WordPress websites, it's, it's an open source um, functionality, which means anybody can contribute to it, which is good and bad. It's like, it's like, wow, Wikipedia entry, right? It could be good and it could be terrible. So with WordPress sites, it's important that it's, you have good people doing good work because people can pick, like, for instance, with WordPress sites, you have a lot of plugins and so you can incorporate plugins to add functionality. And if you don't properly do your research on plugins, they could be insecure. They could be not properly maintained. And so it's important that you kind of do some due diligence there. But all that said, with WordPress uh, website, we will build it in a way that um, you, your team here will be able to edit the website. And one of the things, kind of jumping back to the discovery, when we go through the discovery, we also ask questions about what you will edit. Because we'll build the site in a way that things that you edit often will be really easy to edit. So, and I don't want to get into kind of technical mumbo jumbo, but there are ways you can, like say, for instance, you're um, always adding different um, like in some cases, a company is always adding or taking away employees. Or we have a flight school that's always adding and taking away airplanes. We build the site in a way that we know that those are changes that will happen often. And so anybody within like five to 10 minutes training can go in and make those additions or deletions, so to speak. So in our discovery process, we learn about what you're going to edit and what you need to edit often, and we build the site in a way that on the backend, it's a nice and clean way to edit there. Um, and I think that's really important because even with WordPress sites, you can kind of go in the backend and it can get overwhelming quick. On the other hand, we can also make edits. So we have some of our clients that absolutely do all the work themselves and we have a lot of our clients that say, we don't have time, just do the edits for us. And so we handle that in a, essentially a billable approach. So when we're doing work, uh, we bill for it. And simple changes can take 15 minutes or less. So WordPress is the platform. I think that was already established and that's something that we support and do a lot of. Um, on, from a hosting perspective, we don't really care where the website's hosted. We don't have any affiliation with any third-party host. Um, it's just a matter of we, one of our recommendations is SiteGround, just because we have found with WordPress sites, they perform fast. They offer SSL certificates for uh, as part of their price. Um, and they have good tools as it relates to WordPress. So SiteGround is a recommendation of ours, but it's not necessarily, again, it doesn't really matter to us. We work with GoDaddy and Bluehost and SmallOrange and probably dozens of other different hosting platforms. But it's not, you're not um, hosting through us. I think that's important to note that we will set up and help set up this hosting for you and it'll be in the township's name. It's not a, it's not, again, it's not coming through us. We don't see any uh, and we haven't for many years. We don't see any value in um, hosting through us because frankly, most people who do that are using another solution anyways. So we set up SiteGround. It's in your name. You would have access. We would have access as long as we remain the web provider. Uh, but then you can, the reason why we do it is you could easily have the ability to work with another vendor in the future. We're not interested in, um, you know, holding people hostage, if you will, in a sense of sometimes we run across clients who are like, you know, we want to work with you or we're tired of working, but we can't move the site or they won't give us access or they won't transfer the domain name. We don't want to operate that and do not operate that and want to give you all the keys to your house. Any questions so far? So SiteGround is noted as our, as our preference, again, due to the reasons we mentioned, but it's not uh, we're, we're more than happy to work with a lot of other um, hosting solutions as well. Uh, you'll be, you'll be able to post meetings to the website and as noted again in the scope, I think the the plan that you have, if you're going to do that, to post it to a YouTube channel and then embed it on the website is valuable. I think the, years ago, uh, people would actually try and post videos to a website. And the actual website would be serving up that video content. For the most part, 99 times out of 100, people don't do that anymore because first of all, websites don't want to handle all that bandwidth. And there are tools like YouTube or Vimeo or Name Your Video Platform. They do all the manpower, if you will, the, the, the heavy lifting with the video processing and then you just embed it onto your site with some code. So that, that's almost goes without saying because that, that can be done with almost any platform. Um, and then we would offer train, training of the platform as well. So, and that goes back to what I was saying earlier. We will build the site in a way where the backend is going to be cleaned up. Because if, if you get like, for instance, if you have an editor of a website and if there's too much access, you're going to get overwhelmed by all the options. So we want to distill it down into what you're actually going to edit. And then we build some of those pieces, so um, it's easy to edit. Um, so I think that's, that's important to do. And then once all that's done, of course, we come in and we show you exactly how to edit your site.
Would there be some sort of user guide that you'd also provide a paper copy as a pressure after that training?
Yep, absolutely. And we actually, uh, within the backend of the site, you can actually add a lot of that too. So when you come to the main page of our website, the, the main page of the backend, so the, the dashboard homepage, you will see a lot of that, those instructions there. So, and that's always kind of stays with the site. So if someone logs in, they will see it. Um, so the content is as, as outlined currently, home, news and advanced administration, community, fire and rescue. Police, zoning, roads and services. And then I think that's just, I would put all that in pencil right now because I think what, what should happen as a next step, if we were to move forward is we have that discovery session and we prove out, okay, are these the main areas? Should some go away? Should some get added? You really don't want more than what's outlined, um, especially uh, in this day and age, you don't want like 15 main tabs. You want to try and keep it distilled and keep it clear as to where people should go. But some of that's up for discussion as we go through the discovery uh, portion. Um, items we would need from you, uh, the very first thing uh, that we ask for is Google Analytics. Especially, so with this case and with this project, there is this upfront discovery time. Not all, not all web projects deserve a full discovery period, but this website does because there's a lot of moving parts. But what we need from you, even before that meeting, is access to Google Analytics. Because, to your Google Analytics, because that will start to give us data and help us understand what the current website is doing. Um, where are, what are like the main landing pages? What are the most popular pages? Um, and drill down on a lot of different data. So then we will actually come to the discovery session with some of that information. So not only can we get your feedback, but we can also provide you some data so we can collectively make some data-driven decisions in that regard. Um, of course, also, so that's kind of the first point we need. And then soon thereafter, we'll need logo files, any other branding content, um, access to the domain name. So with the domain name, just as a small point, so essentially when it comes to a website, you have the platform, which is in this case WordPress. You have a domain name, which essentially can be hosted in a variety of different places. And then you have the host where the website's hosted. Sometimes where the domain name is and where the website is hosted can be in the same place. It doesn't have to be. But we do need access to the domain name because getting us access to that allows us to build the website. And when we put it up on SiteGround or whatever hosting platform, we then make the domain name line up. In, in layman's terms. So, and then we would want textual content. Uh, so we would uh, so our plan at this point would be to use the existing content on the website. The goal would be to streamline it. So hopefully we can cut that back as appropriate. But we would, we would start with that there. It's not like when we start with a new business, it's like we have to start with brand new content. In this case, we don't. We would want it more visual. So that's one thing that I would highlight and note. We would want a lot of contributions from the township on the photo side of things. So providing us photos that would, could, could and would be appropriate to be able to weave into the site. Because that's another kind of overarching area of the website that it just needs to be more visual. That's another example of, you know, where it's stated. Questions? Want to keep going? Um, okay, so now I'm gonna jump into the meat and potatoes of our, of our time, which ultimately, so uh, going back to what I said about how our process works, we um, there are kind of, there are all sorts of different web providers out there. There are some who offer uh, packages or depths sizes of websites and then it's an ongoing um, monthly expense. Our whole family of companies, we have several IT companies, our sister companies, and then where the website side of companies were the kind of the exact opposite. Our approach is we essentially, when we provide value by working for whatever client, that's kind of when we get paid. And then we get out of the way. So there's not ongoing built-in expenses from our perspective. Similar to our sister company, which is an IT company, they're not the MSP model where you have, you know, 10 head computers and you pay whatever per month per computer. It's more just per, based off of our time. So you're essentially, as you can see here, you see what our hours will be. And then once that's all complete, the website's yours and then we can help as needed. The only exception to that, um, the only ongoing expense from our perspective would be maintenance. And we can, we can talk about that in a moment. So this breaks down our hours. We have eight to 10 hours for some of the planning, the research, the project management throughout the whole project. And then we have the 10 to 12 hours of our, the discovery sessions. So that's when we're having our internal discussions, internal discussions with you. And then we come back, we want to come back with some streamlined content recommendations. So one of our goals in all of that is to our, our goal is to meet with you, but then also come back to you and say, okay, this is, this is the the size of the website now and these are all the pages and we recommend kind of come to this point. And we do that based off of collaborative discussions with you. That 10 to 12 hours, again, doesn't always exist in every website project, but I think it's pretty important here. Then the next phase, the design and prototyping, which is also a very important part of our process, is once we've all agreed on the general content and structure of is once we've all agreed on the general content and structure of the site, we go through our design phase. And if I go back to the, um, the house building analogy, this is when we build you a three D model of your home. And we use, uh, prototyping software from Adobe called Adobe XD. It's essentially, it gives you a version of your website that you can see, but it's not built. It's a fancy PDF. You can click around on the PDF. It feels like a website, but it's not the website. And essentially what we're showing you is we're showing you what your home will look like. And so that's a process where I can come back and we can talk about it. We can have a meeting virtually or in person. You also get a link so you can see it and share it with others. If there are others that aren't in the room or aren't in the meeting, they can look at the website, even though it's a prototype and provide feedback as well. Uh, and then you give us that feedback, we make modifications. And then the, the beauty of our, that process is by the time we are actually building the site, building the house, if you will, there aren't many surprises. Like, you know, you decided where the kitchen is and you know, where the, the size of the bathroom and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, the good thing from our end of things is if you have that discovery proportion and then you have that prototyping piece, by the time we're building, uh, we don't have to change much. And so it becomes a fairly efficient, uh, process. The chunk of the hours is in the programming and development. So we have programmers on our team. So they'll take the design and they will actually build the site. And they will also, um, you know, incorporate all the things that we talked about from a functionality perspective and also, uh, make it ADA compliant as well. So they will be building the site and then near the end of that process is where they will be adding all the content. Or our team will be adding the content. After that, there's a live proof phase, which is not on our end in terms of hours. But once we have had that discovery, gone through the design phase, and then we're now in the building phase, which is typically the largest chunk of time. Once that's done, which is near the end of our process, we provide you a live proof of the website. So we will give you a link, this time a real link. Uh, it just won't be the Hinkley Township main URL. And you can actually see the website as if it's real, send it to anybody who needs to look at it, send it to department heads, et cetera, et cetera.
So the prototype has no functionality?
No. So the prototype-
Showing a picture of what page looks like?
It has functionality in the sense that you can click around, but it's not built. So it's, it truly is a prototype. It is not the real thing. So like you'll come to the navigation, for instance, and there will be a few pages that you can click on, but you're actually not clicking on new. It's a glorified PDF that allows you to navigate and it looks and feels like a website. And that's why Adobe built XD is they needed something that was better than a PDF, better than Photoshop, but obviously not building a whole website. But, and what we do with that is once it's all designed, you can export it out to your developers and that's getting to the technical pieces. But when, when you will be clicking around completely is during the live proof phase where we now have built the site, we've added the content and now you will be, it'll be as live as your website is today. It just won't be publicly available.
And how long will that be available for us to view?
It can be for however long you need. So our whole process is to kind of, because I'm sure this will be a question. Our whole process is usually about three months, uh, for a, a build. And to, to kind of break that out into what you're looking at here, uh, we usually need about a week's time to go through, uh, the discovery session and the, and the streamlined content. Then we typically need about two weeks' time for, um, the design and prototyping. And then we need about six weeks for the building and adding content. So you can start doing the math there. But within all of those, there needs to be some time added for you all to give us approvals and so, and so forth. So.
So after the website is launched, is there another period of time that if we see something wrong, you guys will go in and change it? Or is it just as needed at that point?
So typically it would be as needed. Like if there was an actual error that, um, we missed and you all missed during the live proof phase and like, like it was just a mistake, then absolutely we'll go in and fix it. If sometimes there's things we wanna add, then we can do it. We would just, in, in that case, we would go to a, probably, we would estimate the time of, okay, yeah, sure, we can do it. It'll take us, it kind of goes back to the changes situation where it'll take us thirty minutes. Can we, can we do that and so forth? So. But yes, anything when it comes to if it's not acting correctly or if it's, um, not working, then that's on us to fix.
But in terms of revisions, how many revisions would we be able to make, um, without a cost?
So when it comes to this, so built into here with the design, there's typically, there's two revisions there. And then on the live proof phase, you will typically allocate one to two weeks for you to just give us revisions that whole time. So, um, it's not necessarily, uh, one week we do revision, we would just want you to keep sending us revisions and then we can do them. So there's not a set amount, if you will. Usually, now if, if the whole kind of picture changed and the content we agreed to early on changed, then we will, we will communicate that. But our whole goal and how we structure things is to make certain there aren't any questions by the time we get to that point and you're just making tweaks and changes.
Because you're letting us view it so many times prior to-
Correct. Right.
Then after the go-live, if there's a problem, what's, what's the turnaround? I mean, is it something that day? Does it take a few days?
Uh, it can be very quick. Yeah, it can be that day. Um, we, we're very responsive. We don't, um, I guess if, so you're, there's no complex functionality here. So we like, we work with a lot of e-commerce sites where it could take a couple of days. Um, but when it comes to content, it's, it's, we're talking business hours, nine times out of ten. Our team's very responsive, very available and so forth. And then website training, that can really happen at any point. It can happen before we go live. It can happen after we go live, whatever works for you. Additional items, so the one item that we can do is, uh, the Google Analytics and Search Console. So you have analytics, but what we wanna do is we wanna set that up more. We wanna set up reports for you so that you can get monthly or annual reports on the analytics of your site. Sometimes, A, sometimes people don't set that up at all, or B, um, they don't really know what's going on. So we want to configure that in a way where you can going forward, get access, get reports and so forth. And then Google Search Console is another piece of the, kind of the data analytics side of things that we believe is important to set up because it tells you the health of your website from Google's perspective. So that's something that it's not necessarily absolutely needed, but, um, it's worth considering.
And those are included in this quote as part of the-
No, that would be an additional two hours. Correct. Correct. And then the hosting expense, again, that's not coming from us. So I gave you that range of twenty to thirty dollars per month for hosting. Now, if we go, for instance, with a place like SiteGround, they offer, and this gets off into the weeds a little bit, but they offer an introductory price. So for the first year, I think it's, um, six or eight or ten dollars per month. But then it goes up to that rate. So I quoted you what the rate will be going forward. And that includes, like I said, hosting, but it also includes an SSL certificate, some, which makes your website secure. Sometimes hosting companies get you by the, oh, well, I do an SSL certificate, certificate for another fee and so forth. SiteGround and with the traffic you'll, you have and with the functionality, that twenty to thirty dollars is a good, ballpark for hosting expenses going forward.
So from top of the list, project management to website training, then we become operational?
Correct.
What's the timeline there?
About three months.
About three months. Okay.
So scrolling down to, uh, the end of this page. So we're looking at approximately eighty-one to a hundred and one hours. Um, like I said, there, there's really no mystery in our expenses or our costs. It's all based off of hours and rates. Um, in this case, we're talking about our web design development rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So our total cost is between ten thousand and twelve thousand, six hundred. Um, not including the additional items. And sometimes there are more additional items. In this case, there aren't. So that kind of outlines the cost. And then a lot of the rest of the proposal is fine print. Uh, but typically, um, from a payment perspective, we prefer to have fifty percent down. If there's another way that makes sense with the township, we're happy to go a different direction. Um, but that's, we kind of break out where the different milestones so are. So first milestone is project approval. The second milestone is when you approve the prototype. Um, so remember we're, we're gonna go through discovery and then we're gonna go through design prototype at that point. We'll have reached milestone two. And then when we provide you the live proof, which essentially means the website's done, you're just making tweaks. That's milestone three. And then we go live. That's milestone four. So questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Have you ever done a municipality before?
Well, just recently, we, uh, did Wadsworth Townships.
Okay.
Um, I, I, and I was gonna pull up a couple of websites if you wanna look at some of the work we did. And I can also provide you a list of, uh,
Is Wadsworth up and running?
Yeah. Yeah.
We see it.
Absolutely. So they, um, so here it is. Their site is simpler than yours, um, from the get-go. I'm sharing it. That's not working. It's as if like we haven't shared screens the last two years.
I know. It's tricky to do when you're adding.
I know it is. All right. Let me stop. No, I don't wanna do that. New share. Here we go. I have a big screen here to remind me if I'm not sharing correctly. Okay. Uh, Wadsworth Township, just did it over the winter. Uh, we went live. Wow, time flies, but now I guess January or February. Their site is simpler than yours. Uh, they did not have as many requirements in the sense of, they did, simply didn't have as much information. They don't have the same, um, you know, like from a, from a city services perspective, you have Wadsworth City's Police Department and things like that. So you don't have those departments in the same way in that township. So it's a little bit different. Uh, yeah, at the same time, uh, it is a township. So I think it's an appropriate one to bring up. We've also, uh, recently done, um, Wadsworth CityLink. So wa, most of you may be aware, Wadsworth, of course, is a city, but they also have a city link, which is, uh, cable services. So we built that whole platform, which that was a little bit more custom because now we're talking about essentially the ability for a user to find, um, different types of, uh, email, sorry, different types of cable, different types of internet, different types of TV and VoIP, and then they can package all of it together. So I would consider that also a, um, municipal, but not necessarily a municipal site. Similar, but then you had a couple of other questions? Or I can keep going on this just a little-
No, I, that was just one of the things that I wanted to see if, um, you guys had done municipalities, if you're familiar with them. And then, um, I saw your letter that you have, um, twenty years of experience in it. How long has Ideal Graphics been around?
So Ideal's been around, that probably should be slightly revised, more than twenty years. So we're talking late nineties now.
Okay.
Um, and then it changed ownership about eighteen years ago.
Okay.
And it's been the same ownership since then.
And you guys have been doing web design the entire time?
Yes. Yes. And, but I will say it's, well, no, let me correct that. I don't know about way early on. But the last, so I've been there six years or approaching six years and we've done what our main bread and butter has been websites. But what's happening in our business is we're actually going more and more digital. We're actually going through our own rebranding right now and Ideal Graphics is going to become Ideal Creative. That kind of tells a story. Cause when you think of Ideal Graphics, when you think of graphics, you think of, or at least some people do signage and things like that. We do, the vast majority of our work right now is digital, is web design development. So we are actually going through that kind of upgrade ourselves. But it's not because we're doing it in advance of what we've done. We've been doing websites. The majority of our work has been websites for many years and related stuff. So other businesses need help with their Google Business Listings and social media and how old and review generation, a lot of which is not necessarily applicable here in, in this sense, but it's all digital. And so it's that whole discussion we have with clients of what is your digital presence online?
You mentioned social media. What kind of social media management offerings do you guys do?
So it's a, it just really depends. So we can do the actual, all of it. So we can post it on a regular basis, or in some cases, we will just offer help when needed. It really just depends.
And that'd be at that one twenty-five an hour is pretty much how that would work?
Yes. So in, in that case, it depends on what's settled on. So like if it's like, if it's, um, you know, twice a month or something, then it's not just going to be based off an hourly rate. It'll, that'll be more of an ongoing plan, which is typically relatively economical.
What other websites have you done that we might know of?
Um, so I had a few pulled up here. Like this is not necessarily an example of what you've, what you would know of. Well, like if you live in Wayne County, you would, but, um, so, but this is an example of a website that I, that I've thought at least worth mentioning. Wayne County Board of Developmental Disabilities, of course, is out of Wayne County, just south of us. And they're a site that is a combination, it's not obviously necessarily a municipal site, but it is, um, a site, a, a government site on some level with a lot of different things going on. So I think that was worth noting. Uh, this was also, uh, a site that needed to be ADA, ADA compliant. It's a site that had quite a bit of information. Um, and you can kind of just get a sense, in this case, their logo was already all defined. So you can kind of get a sense of how we, um, took and, and built a whole site. Their site was very dated when we first, um, took it over and now it's, it's quite, um, updated and modern and so forth. Um, another site that you may or may not be aware of, uh, more, this Action Management Services, um, is a company, the president lives here in Hinkley, Dale Chorba. We did this site for them, um, no, a year and a half ago, I would say. So this is a site that is not necessarily, um, similar to what we're looking to do here. But it is in the sense of, in some respects, all websites are the same. You can get a sense of the quality of our work, um, how we try, try to integrate our design. You know, in, in this case, you have, um, their logo and their logo here and it's moving. And, and in this case, it was very important to them to focus on what they're recognized for. And then throughout, there's a very cohesive, um, you know, clear design where we incorporate their colors. And in this case, also incorporate things like their Forbes Awards and so forth. And then it was also important to see the leadership team. All of this came to light over the course of the discovery, uh, period and, um, and so forth. And then, uh, just another example of what we've done, just to kind of show you our versatility, my-
You see Hinkley Township up there. You don't wanna show us that one.
I do not. Right. So Angler Construction is also, um, in our neck of the woods, if you will. I think they've done a lot of work, um, throughout this whole area. This is also a site we've done recently. They are remodeling, they remodel myhome.com. Um, they are remodeling, they remodel myhome.com. And, uh, that's another site that we've recently done. Again, different, I suppose, in the sense of not exactly a township, but it shows you, they were looking for a few different things, they were looking for a showcase. And so in this showcase, you have different types of, um, uh, projects. And then they, they also wanted a whole ideas area where you can go in if you want to remodel your home and figure out, okay, what type of work have you done when it comes to, you know, bathrooms, for instance? You can go in and, and, um, and see the work they've done in bathrooms and so forth, so. Uh, and then we've done numerous other websites, um, but that just kind of gives you a smattering of what we've done.
Thank you for that. Now you had mentioned maintenance, do you have like a ma- maintenance options?
So we, um, yes, so essentially what we do with maintenance with WordPress, uh, there are a couple of things that need to happen on a regular basis. It's, uh, plugins need to be updated, uh, the website needs to be backed up, um, and, uh, the WordPress updates, when WordPress updates, which generally happen automatically, but not the main updates, all of those things need to occur. Um, and so we offer for an annual cost, and I, I'm sorry, I should have put in the proposal, I meant to and then forgot. Um, it's, it's $400 a year for the maintenance of, of keeping that up to date. So essentially what we do is we go in every four to six weeks and we make certain everything is up to date with the plugins. Um, that's our, our main level and that's really all WordPress website needs. If it's an e-commerce website, it needs more. And then again, as, as we're asked to do changes, which we don't really see, it's maintenance, that's more, you know, we want to, we want to add this or take away that, then we would, uh, bill appropriately, um, for those types of changes.
That maintenance aspect, is that something you could train us on and we could decide whether we want to continue that or not?
Uh, I, yes, with a big asterisk, um, because it can be done. And when I say a big asterisk, depending on how technical the team member is on your side, um, it can be done. And then with the kind of the fair warning of, if you update a plugin and it breaks the website, you're coming to us to help us fix it, if that makes sense. Not that, not that it's, we're, we don't want that to happen, but it does happen. Um, or since we have dozens of WordPress sites, sometimes we know that this plugin update shouldn't happen because it's going to cause another problem. So for the most part, most clients let us handle it. But if you have somebody who's technical, they can handle the majority of that with, I would say the expectation, once a year or two, you may be calling us because something's not working. If that makes sense, so.
When you do the backup, what is the backup to? I'm assuming you're doing it so it's on, on your end.
Yes, so.
Our computer system.
Correct. So typically, and I think there's two different places, but I think the main place, if I'm recalling correctly, is, uh, AWS. So there's an Amazon server that we have where we will back up the website and we do several things. Um, and I can get more details on this because I don't know it all off the top of my head. Um, we back up the whole site once a week and then, uh, the database items daily or, or some nature of that. We've, down through the years, very rare, I know, I can't recall a problem we've had with that, but, uh.
Well, that's smart for us to do, especially with our records retention.
Yeah, absolutely.
As far as the backup of the site, is that something that's incorporated in this cost that you gave us initially? Between that 10,000 and the 12,625?
That would be part of the maintenance. Yeah, so that would be the additional 400 a year.
Then if, if the township was to choose, uh, ideal, what's the, what's your schedule? What's the turnaround to get started?
We, um, at this point, uh, anytime really, we definitely have projects we're working on, but.
Within a week, within a month?
Within a week, yeah. Within a week, uh, we would need that time just to schedule and, because essentially, whenever you're ready to move forward, um, you know, next day is get us analytics and then a week out, let's schedule that discovery meeting, if that works for all of you. So that's, that definitely fits within our schedule.
Very good, does anyone else have questions for Kevin?
Can you open those tabs for, like, open the opening?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm curious, but it looks like.
Isn't that pretty?
It's very green. Yeah, it is.
Look at all the access you have with forms and applications.
And directory.
So we can actually, zoning forms on the website.
Again, this was, I think, from a content perspective, less, um, comprehensive than what you're looking to do, but.
Now go back a tab.
Sorry, am I causing stress? Q and A's.
Dan had a question about posting minutes, does, does Wadsworth Township post, um, meeting minutes from the zoning or from any of the boards or agendas that we could see?
I don't think they do.
Consider it.
I don't think they do. They have upcoming, but no, they don't have past minutes up here currently.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right.
I know.
We've got another vendor to visit that's coming in virtually and then, um, I'm certain that we'll probably talk more and make a decision if not today, then for later tonight.
Awesome. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, thanks for your time.
Have a great snowy day.
Yes, I know, we're, uh.
It's really coming down now.
I'm recovering from a Florida trip last week, so.
Oh, I'm just going to say, we're going to use the virtual audience.
I heard.
Okay, we're resuming and we have Mr. Jeff Green on and sharing his screen. Jeff, you're from Ring the Gong?
Yeah, Ring the Gong, yes, that's the name of our company.
Okay, perfect, I'm going to give you the floor, so you can have a present at your leisure.
Hello, everyone, hello, hello. Um, I had opportunity to sit in and, and listen to, um, you know, the tail end of Ideal. I imagine, are, are we the third company to present?
Yes.
All right, so, um, you know, I think that there's probably going to be a lot of repeat here. Um, because it, it seems like, you know, the entities that you, you may have chosen for finalists, you know, are all very good. Uh, we wouldn't be here unless we weren't good, so, uh, from a development standpoint. I think that the difference between really Ring the Gong and anyone else is we have a true passion for business development. And, and I understand that this is, this is a little bit different because this is a township, um, uh, web, web development project. But when companies hire me and my team, they do so to really help build their brand, which ultimately will, will lead to more business. Now again, we're talking about something completely different because you have constituents who are limited to the Hinckley Township area. Um, you know, depending on, if we want to drive more, uh, business to the organi- to the, uh, to the entity or, or, you know, do we want to drive more residents to, to the entity? But, you know, really what we're looking at doing is refreshing, um, your existing website, uh, making it more interactive, ADA compliant, mobile friendly. Um, and then, you know, even connect to social media to, um, to generate more awareness amongst, uh, the township residents. So again, um, people hire Ring the Gong to really build their brand. Um, the website itself is, is truly a, a good part of it, but there's more to it, right? And the marketing side is really where we, where we really, um, I guess excel. Um, we're passionate about what we do. We want to make sure that we give you everything that you need in order to be successful. So much so that, you know, one thing, I'm, I'm not sure what the, the, uh, the other, um, the other vendors are offering, but we'll provide you with three different templates upfront in order for you to make the best decision as to, you know, what, what you like in terms of, of layout. And we really do that at no cost. We want to be sure that, um, we provide you with an end product that, um, you're very comfortable with. So one of the other reasons that I think that we're, we're, we're chosen, uh, amongst our competition is because we are very cost competitive. Um, I have been doing this now for about 15 years. Um, I've worked in different capacities within the internet development world. I owned a company and actually I still do, um, uh, in India with five full-time employees who do, uh, web development for me. At one point, I operated the second largest fantasy cricket website in the world and we did that through our development team in India. In order to pay the bills, um, we took on side web development projects. Um, my background is in internet marketing, digital marketing, lead generation, which allowed us to really, um, build out our clientele. At one point, I had about 20 monthly, uh, customers doing internet marketing services for, namely in the environmental services business. And, um, since then, most, or actually all of those companies have been acquired by, by bigger, uh, companies. So it gives me some more time kind of to do this on the side. Um, I don't have experience working with municipalities. I do have plenty of experience working with significantly large companies, but we really cut our teeth working with that small business owner. Um, and I, I feel like there's some similarities there with what it is that Hinckley Township is trying to do and what the small business owner is doing. Um, you really, again, you're trying to modernize the website to make it more user-friendly and to provide, um, you know, the resources to your residents to be able to, to get them to become more informed. Um, do you have any questions about that quick little interro- introduction?
No.
No.
Okay. So moving really into, um, the, the scope, the scope of the project. You know, what, what I would propose we do is we sit down over the next week or two with all the stakeholders to get an idea of truly what it is that the township wants to have done, all right? Because having been through this before with small family businesses with multiple stakeholders, some people have, um, different mindsets or different ideas of what their website wants to, what, what they want their website to look like, what they want, how they want it to function, um, and what the overall goals of the website are. So I would propose that we have a sit-down meeting in person with the, with the groups, uh, the stakeholders necessary. Um, and we can kind of draft out what open to close looks like, all right? Um, and from there, that's where, where all of this comes in. So, you know, we, we too will use WordPress. We find that it's the easiest, uh, content management system to use. We'll have the specific plugins necessary to host a calendar, to host the minutes, to, um, put live Zoom presentations on the website. All of that can fairly easily be done, um, in WordPress, okay? From there, you know, we'll connect to Google Analytics, we'll make sure that Search Console is there in Google. So that way later on, we can make informed decisions as to what content interests your constituents the most, right? And from there, you know, do we develop a blog? You know, do we have, um, you know, what is going to interest folks on the social media side to gen- to get their eyeballs back onto the site in order to, um, to get, you know, to review minutes or, um, to get people more involved in the meetings? I think that, that in itself is fairly simple. We're not building databases. We're not building, um, applications, right? And, and the reason I, I say that is because we're able to keep our costs low if we don't fool around with these things that are probably not necessary for the township, all right? Getting back into the development process, like I said, this is where I think the, the majority of the work, frankly, is going to be done, is the initial planning with you and the other stakeholders. From there, myself, my team will begin working on the actual wireframing of the website. Um, and again, we're going to provide you with three different templates for you to choose from. My team ideally, I mean, I'm, I'm fair, fairly well capable in, in generating copy. I'm hoping that, um, from your side, that in order to make this a smooth transition, that you have somebody that's, that's already written copy or we can pull from the existing website onto, onto the new website. If there's any photographs, any other graphics that you'd like to add, perhaps you have a photographer, we can use stock photography all day long, but I prefer not to. Particularly, you know, because you want to showcase the residents of the township as much as you possibly can. Um, from there, we move into the development and testing, the actual testing mode, which I think will, will be more along the lines of, is the calendar working properly? Is the, um, are the meeting minutes posted properly? Can people access, um, the, the live meetings when they occur? And then, you know, are we connected to social media the, the proper way? And then going forward, how do we launch the website? I certainly think we need to have some fanfare where we present on, you know, Facebook or Instagram or whatever it is we decided to do, Twitter, uh, a lot of municipalities use that for information. Um, saying, hey, we've got a great, great new website, um, you can get all your information here. And then from there, my team will continue to, will begin and then continue to optimize the site. Again, you know, to, to see where the traffic is, you know, are we doing any form of search engine optimization? I would do on-page SEO, I probably wouldn't necessarily. I probably wouldn't necessarily have a search engine optimization campaign. It's probably not necessary for what it is you're trying to accomplish. What questions do you have amongst the development and the planning stage?
What are we looking at from start-up process to go live? What's the timeframe?
I would estimate 45 days. Truly, we could do the development of this in about two weeks if we know that. And that's, but that's after we've done the exploratory phase with the stakeholders.
And if given the green light, how soon could we start this process?
We can begin the process ASAP. And my team is really gung-ho and ready to make it happen. If you give us the green light, you know, my team in India will be able to begin the development as soon as we meet to discuss what the scope of the project actually should look like. And then, you know, what's interesting is I've got a 14-year relationship with my team. And because there's a 10-and-a-half-hour difference, and they're focused on the development, what they'll do is they'll do iteration, send it to me while I'm sleeping. I wake up in early morning, I'll look at the iteration, and then work with you to get your feedback. We share it with them. They in turn do the development again when we're sleeping. So in essence, we have about 24 hours a day of service that we can provide.
And what kind of training do you provide on this? Would somebody come out here or Zoom training for our staff on the website?
Truly, whatever you need, we can do. We work with the local community action agency of Toledo. That's where I'm out of, Toledo, Ohio. We do the development for Pathway Toledo, which is the local community action agency. And they ask the exact same question. And my lead developer, his name is Ram Afar. He's out of Chennai, India. And he's, his English is impeccable. And what I love about Ram is that he understands the American vernacular, which is a challenge that we've had in the past with other Indian partners. But with Ram, he will actually do Zoom tutorial. So he works with the communications department at Pathway, and they set up a weekly meeting where they'll say, hey, Ram, you know, we'd like this done, this done, and this done. He'll go ahead and make those changes. But he's trying to train them to be able to make those changes without the need for Ring the Gong. We'll always be there in case I heard the previous gentleman say, you know, we don't really want to give you that access because you're gonna break things. You break things, we fix them. It is what it is, right? But we'll work with your team directly, hand in hand, and give them the tools necessary to be dangerous on the backend with WordPress.
And then, if we break something and we need you, how quickly, how quickly can we expect a call back or some help from you?
So, should you become a client of ours, you know, we make it a point. I've never seen anyone actually move as quickly as Ram does. But usually you'll get a call from me or an email back within 45 minutes from my side, and then Ram will begin working on that fix within an hour or so. And, you know, I'm looking through the, I just, I'm amazed at the pricing, how competitive we can be. But Ram's, we're at $75 an hour if we need to fix something. And that's beyond the 45 days. So we'll give you 45 days of testing and training. All of that is free of charge. We're gonna teach you how to do that. I'm dangerous myself when it comes to WordPress. I've had to learn it through what I've done with my previous company, All Shred Services. I was head of sales and marketing and learned all that. So I'm happy, even if Ram's not available, which he will be, I'm happy to share my knowledge with you. In addition, I'm also able to fix problems as they occur.
So in that 45 days, that would be after go-live. Does that include any revisions to the site would be included?
Yep. So you would get unlimited revisions for those first 45 days. But we're hoping that with the three different templates that we provide you, the three different themes that we provide you, that that would be, you know, that will suffice. However, we understand that this is a living, breathing organism. And again, we have many, many opinions in the room and then even in the people that aren't in the room, right? So we're happy to work with you and develop, make those changes within those 45 days. And then ultimately, you know, it would be good to be able to get you on some sort of a recurring, a recurring revenue model or retention or something like that, where even if Ring the Gong was operating your social media marketing strategy to a tune of $500 a month, then that creates that stickiness, right? So then I could say, Ram, you know, and we've got clients that we do this stuff seriously for free. I don't know how we stay in business. But if, if we need to make those changes beyond those 45 days, I'm sure we'll be able to work that out for you.
And then you mentioned that you do social media management.
Yep.
What does that look like? Is that a monthly rate? Does it depend on, do you have packages?
Yeah, we can put together packages. Typically, the clients, when they use us, we're doing something around the lines of about $500 a month. And that includes updating a Facebook calendar that creates auto posts. Obviously, we're working with, ideally, we'd be working with somebody on your team to provide us with suggestions of content. And we set up that monthly calendar with Facebook. We can create Twitter posts based on, yeah, Twitter posts based on our Facebook feed. We can do the same with Instagram. But what we want to do is then, we'll make those posts, but then we would actively converse with the people that are responding to us, right? Now, what I've seen is working with municipalities in the past, just from, you know, my fun on Facebook, is that there's more people speaking negatively to the townships and the municipalities than there are people speaking positively. So it's something to really be cognizant of that, you know, if you're hiring us to do that, do we want to, that we really set the rules to say, hey, Jeff, we don't want you responding to that, or, hey, we'll respond to that, or you can respond to it, but don't be, you know, just be very professional in your demeanor, or whatever it might be, right? We have to set those ground rules.
Or just have commenting turned off?
Yes.
You're not allowed to comment in the township municipality.
Yep.
You had mentioned video, live streaming of the meetings on the website. How would that work? Would those videos be saved on the website? What's your vision for that?
Yeah, we could create a library for the past, right? So I think we should have a chronological timeline that allows people to go back in the past within a certain date, right? Because I've always, and this is ultimately, you know, on the township's decide, but I've always believed in transparency amongst, you know, government entities. And so if we had, you know, X amount of time, X amount of dates available to click on from the past, you can review, or yeah, you can review the videos from these, the recordings from the meetings. So I think we create a library based on that. I like the idea, you know, because this is on Zoom. I imagine that going forward, that we'll continue to do township meetings via Zoom. We can click on, we'll set it up so it'll be easily recognizable. People can click on it to watch the meetings live, should you choose to do that. And then we'll make the library easily accessible as well.
Do you feel that the website will be large enough to host this library?
I do, yes. I do. And just like the previous vendor, you know, he mentioned something about $400 a month to host on AWS, which I would recommend the same.
This is the second time you've mentioned the other vendor, and I'm sorry. You weren't there for the whole presentation, so I'm not sure that you're understanding the full conversation that was had. So I would just recommend that we just talk about what you can do for us.
Fair enough, fair enough, yes. AWS is the standard for hosting nowadays. It's flexible with regard to the bandwidth that it needs to provide. I don't estimate or I don't anticipate having the recorded meetings taking up significant amount of bandwidth. But even if they did, AWS fluctuates, so your speed will not fluctuate. So it'll be still easy to access everything.
There's no storage restriction? Or if there is, is there an additional fee?
I would have to get that to you. It's based on Amazon rates. And typically, when we do things like this, we do, we don't, we just pass it on to the customer. We don't actually take a premium for managing that. That's something that, you know, the hosting fee is the hosting fee, and that's usually done by GoDaddy or Amazon. We just pass it on to you, or you set that up on your own, which actually, frankly, I would do from a security standpoint. Because let's say you decide that, you know, Jeff Green, Ring the Gong, isn't the, isn't, you know, that you liked us in the beginning, we did the development for you, and all of a sudden you hated us. Now we're holding you hostage, right? But if you hosted this on your own platform through AWS or GoDaddy, you could then leave us at any time and hand it to, you know, someone internally, an external vendor, whatever you choose to do. That's what I would recommend from a security standpoint.
And Jeff, you mentioned the training that you guys do, like a Zoom tutorial. Do you also provide any kind of a user guide for quick reference?
We can do that for you. Yep, we can set that up. Based on the backend for the CMS platform or the WordPress platform, we'll provide you with a basic tutorial for how to update really basic things. Heck, even, you know, WordPress plugin updates, we can show you how to do that, which would save you a significant amount of time.
I have one additional question if I could. As far as if we're using WordPress, once this project is done and you basically let us run with it, will you provide us with the login for updating it ourselves? Or is that something you will charge a fee for if we want to update it ourselves afterwards?
You will have all login credentials for anything we do. Though the last thing I want to do is have a perception that we're holding you hostage, right? I've experienced it sitting on your side of the table as the business owner, right? I never, and that's, I think, one of the other differences between me and another entity out there is that I experience both sides, from the web, from the web development, internet marketing business, but more importantly, the business owner side. And the last thing I want to do is feel like I'm being held hostage by my website guy.
The total cost was?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Is it up there right now? So it's up there right now? So note here that we're asking for $3,800, $1,900 upfront, $1,900 after the site's been completed, so 50/50. If there's anything above and beyond the scope, we would charge $75 an hour. I think we'll get a better idea as to what the scope is once we meet in person after we agree to terms. And then we'll set that out, and then anything above and beyond that's the $75. I don't anticipate that being a problem. We've never really had to use that before. And then this is something too that you need to understand with regarding to your budget, that if there's any third-party plugin that we would be using that requires some sort of an annual fee, that's something that you would pay directly. We wouldn't upcharge you, obviously. I mean, we would pay, we could pass it on to you, whatever it might be. But I, if we're talking any paid plugins, I would estimate you're probably looking at about $300 a year maximum for what it is we would add to the website.
Do you have a backup abilities at all?
Yeah, so we would take a backup, and typically we do these on a daily basis. And that's done through WordPress. And we could, that could be also set up to be hosted through the third-party host. So we would have a backup. And typically, the backup would be done in, gosh, the name, the name's escaping me right now, but we use a third-party backup software to, cloud-based, to be able to handle that. So you would have your site hosted either at Amazon or GoDaddy, and then we'd have another backup website, SiteLock? No, it's not SiteLock.
And what is the fee for backups? Is that part of the maintenance?
Part of the maintenance.
The plugins?
Yep, so it's part of WordPress. The hosting for the backup, again, would be something third-party that, like AWS, that it would just be passed on to you. I could see it being $25 a month for the size of the site.
So $300 for a year for the plugins, and then another $25 a month for the backups?
Yep, for the backup hosting. And then I would estimate that if you want to, truly, based on what I see with where you want to go with the Hinkley Township website, I estimate another $300 a year for hosting. So if you're looking for your website all-in, 300, plus 300, which is about right, plus another 300. So you're probably looking at about $900 maximum a year for ancillary services. That includes hosting and the plugin purchases, assuming that we made plugin purchases.
Plus the 500 per month?
If we, if we went down that path of managing, of us managing your social media, yes. But the website itself, if we're just talking specifically about that, it's be $3,800 plus another $900 a year for ancillary services, which would be passed on to you. That doesn't go to Ring the Gong.
Do you have any suggestions, just by looking at our website, that you might identify that need help?
Man, I actually really like your website. I think that, yes, it could be more modernized. I think we could use different font. I think that the light blue font is challenging to read at times. I think that, you know, the smaller font here with the different, between the green and the red, you know, and the different font sizes and the font types, I think, make it challenging to read. I think that we could make it more mobile-friendly. I think that, you know, from a, you've got great content here. But if we want someone to, like, check out the meetings, we might, we might just put right front and center, you know, township meetings, right here, right? So calls to action, I would put specific calls to action in, on things that we really want to get eyeballs on. So this was a website that I had worked with locally in Slovenia Township. Now, I didn't do the full development of this. I was consulted upon with the actual developer, but even right here. So they know that their meeting is tonight, so boom, right here, they publish, they publish, publish that they've got their trustees meeting, right? So I click on it right here, and then it takes me right here. And they use GoToMeeting for theirs, right? They've got their agenda here. I can sign up easily if there's any alerts needed, right? So they make their information readily available for the items that are important, what they deem important to their constituents, right? So in Slovenia Township, yesterday began brush service pickup. This is something that everyone asks about. So boom, right there in their header, they've got everything that the constituent would want or the resident would want, right? I like that, how they've simplified it into really some pretty basic, a basic header, right? Whereas with us, we've got, you know, the good, I love how they're graphic-based. I like that. There's just a lot of content here. Nothing wrong with that. It's just how do we want it laid out? And we'll provide you with those three different templates with how, and we'll show you different ways that we can lay out the material. So you have the information. Let's just make it more, you know, readily accessible. It's a good site.
Do you have any examples of websites that you've actually worked on and run with and did from the get-go?
Yeah, so here's a website that we've done. This is a local nonprofit organization called Be Instrumental. They hired us to really rebrand their website in an effort to drive more interaction amongst potential partners and to drive donations throughout the organization. Pathway Toledo. And this is one that we developed. And I really liked, I liked- And I really liked, I like this website because it provides a great little header image, or a hero image is what I call it. We've got all of the basic information that they require. You know, the donate, the social media links are easily there. You know, here's an email address and phone number. We make it easy. And we actually taught the Pathway team to be able to update this header image or the hero image to show what was important to them. So right now, they have this Ohio to Work Initiative, which was important for Pathway as the organization to promote. So whenever they have something or a new program, the Home Relief Emergency Program, they're giving several million dollars from the state to be able to give for home relief, they create this update. So they make the changes that are important to them. You know, they make it easy in terms of the information. Again, this is more of an information-based website. But we've also set up things like, you know, if you want to volunteer, if you want to, if you want to, if you're looking for a job, we have, we've got them set up on a blog. So if they're, you know, they want to update any pertinent information, they can via the blog, which is, you know, it's been good for their search engine optimization. They're vying for also funding. You know, they want local dollars from a donation standpoint. So search engine optimization was important for them to be the community action agency in Toledo. And then through Ring the Gong, here's my partner developer. This is all of his work that he's done. A lot of it is app development, database development. But he also has e-commerce and general overall, like business-to-business services that he's done. Right? So we've, we have extensive experience doing web design and web development services. Again, I'm going to go back to my first comment. I don't see, well, it's important, I'm glad that you're doing what you're doing to modernize what Hinkley Township's putting out there and to get it out there in front of, in a different way in front of, in front of your residents. I don't see this being a very difficult project to do, which is why we came in at a very competitive rate.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Green?
I'm good.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming on with us today, Mr. Green, and telling us a little bit more about your company and what you could do for Hinkley Township. I'm just looking at our purpose of our meeting, which is just really to meet with the website companies. We have a trustee meeting this evening that we'll probably have further conversation about the vendors that we spoke with today, and then we'll be back in touch with you.
Very good. Appreciate the time today and I wish you all the best. I think that my, again, my advice is for everybody to come together to understand really what the scope of the project should look like. Once you have that, I think that whatever vendor you choose, it makes, it makes everyone's life that much easier. So appreciate the opportunity. All right, have a great day.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Because the purpose is just to meet with the web design companies, I thought we should have further conversation at tonight's meeting. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I can see that. I guess I would be curious what our guests that came, to kind of hear from them, since they won't be here this evening. I don't know.
I don't know how far in-depth you guys want to, I mean, I have a clear frontrunner in my mind based on the presentation and scorecards.
Why don't you email us? Because I don't think that that falls under the purpose. We didn't really talk about the discussion process in our purpose for this special meeting. So if you want to email us and Lynn and Suzanne, please let us know or have conversation with us after, we'd be happy to hear.